I turn on individuals with liberty and justice from.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting back to order and we are going to start with revised workshop for the budget.
Okay. So, so if I can speak to what we're proposing in in general terms and then I'll turn it over to Andy to walk you through the the revised budget items and then also speak to what we're proposing in terms of closing the gap. You know, this is a, this is a very different scenario. I think, you know, in terms of a reference, probably the closest any of us have in our professional career is, is the recession of 2008. This is, is similar in some respects in terms of how the governor is handling school budgets, but it's different in the sense that the circumstances are a bit more dire. You know, never at any point did the deficit during that crisis at the state level go beyond 10 billion. They're anticipating between 12 to 15 going into this next year. So if you think about how difficult that was in 2008, 2009, 2010, during those years and even, even beyond that, because it took a while for districts to get back on their feet. We have to prepare ourselves for the fact that there's the potential where this could be, to be worse. The $1.6 million gap that we, that we talked about or, or loss of revenue that we now have to make up, that's the number right now. We're being told that that could get worse even before spring is through. And the governor has been given the authority to reduce school budgets on a quarterly basis depending on state revenues, which makes it really difficult for us to plan. Having said that, I think, you know, this is sort of his best case scenario and really difficult situation. We, you know, I, again, I want to emphasize, I, I asked our entire team to participate in this conversation because all of us have actively participated in the conversation around what we might propose in terms of closing the gap in a way that's, at least in this initial wave of gap closing would have minimum impact on learning that takes place in the classroom and student outcomes. And in a way that would not lay people off, or at least would, to the extent possible, minimize that to the, to the fullest extent. We, we have to recognize that we're going to have to stagger reductions because this isn't going to be a one-year thing. We anticipate that we can get through this initial wave of revenue loss, but there's going to be more that follows. And, and we, we quite honestly, part of our strategy was to make reductions now because as you know, and, and you know, Jennifer is living it right now. It, it is extremely difficult when you have to cut programs and lay people off mid-year. So what we're trying to do is position ourselves right now so that we can absorb what's coming and absorb a little bit more once we get, after we get started next year in a way that's not going to completely throw the organization and our programs into chaos. So right now we're taking what I would say is the scalpel as opposed to the hatchet. And we're gradually reducing as we go along, knowing that, you know, we're going to have to prepare for probably two to three years of this at a minimum. And like I said, you know, the, the, the primary objective is being to preserve programs to the extent possible, keep cuts away from classrooms and to not lay people off. While this is a difficult position for us to be in and it was unanticipated, if you remember, this was supposed to be a ho-hum budget year and a $137 million budget, you know, we were looking at, you know, about, you know, somewhere around, you know, less than a million dollars in terms of, in terms of the gap, which we were proposing to close through use of reserves and some measured reductions, but the situation's a lot different now. And so while it's difficult, I do think because of the decisions that we've made leading to this point in time, I think we're positioned better than a lot of other districts, but that doesn't make it any, any easier. So if the numbers hold, meaning if 1.6 approximately stays 1.6, then we feel that, that, you know, the recommendations that we're, we're proposing for reductions can get us there without disrupting progress in a way that is significant. So having said that, I'm going to turn things over to Andy to walk us through some of the specifics with the new revenue projections and what we would be proposing in terms of getting us to a place that closes the gap.
All right. Thank you, Bo. As you all know, this has been a long process to develop the budget. Under the tax cap era, our mandates always tend to be higher than our revenue. And you guys started in early December reviewing program and service review. How do we maintain the levels of programs and services while living under the tax cap? So we're being responsible to our, our community taxpayers. As Bo had mentioned, we had developed a, a very strong budget. It had a small amount of measured cuts as well as a little bit of increased revenue, but now that the state has come out with our, our actual budgeted allocations, so we do have some changes. The first, the big thing that changed, they did freeze foundation aid, but fortunately for us, that was not a big deal. We had only a little over $60,000 increase that we were going to receive under the governor's budget that was taken away. The state did maintain our expense-driven aids, so we actually are receiving some increased aid on our expense-driven aids, but then what the state did, they, they did a pandemic adjustment, which removed $1,085,000 from our budget. Now they're publicizing that they're going to keep us whole through using federal care money, which is, is some of the federal stimulus money to, to help with schools. But at this point, we don't know the criteria for qualifying for it, the timing of it. And, and the bigger concern we have is, as Bo mentioned, the state, the governor has the authority three times throughout the state budget year to measure revenue coming in versus expenditures and that the revenues are, are falling short by more than 1% or from budget or the expenditures are increasing over 1% over budget, the governor has the authorization to reduce state payments. So what we're proposing is to take that pandemic adjustment whole as a reduction as well as the other big reduction we're going to see is our sales tax sharing. This year we had budgeted a $200,000 increase in our sales tax sharing. But as you know, gas prices have fallen and car sales are pretty much stalled and those are the two biggest drivers of sales tax. So we think it's prudent to put in a $500,000 reduction in sales tax receipts. So those are the two big adjustments to the revenue budget from what we had just agreed to at the last board meeting. And the other thing we did, we did increase our appropriated fund balance usage by a couple hundred thousand dollars. Even though we, we were required to maintain all of our personnel expenditures during the close down, we're required to pay all of our private and charter school tuitions, maintain our, our BOSI's programs. We do think we will have some expense reductions, whether it's bus fuel or per diem substitutes, there's a number of areas that'll be reduced, but we think we will have some more money ending this year that we can carry into next year. So we're proposing adding $200,000 to appropriated fund balance. But as the superintendent mentioned, that leaves us with a $1.6 million gap that we have a number of reductions proposed. But before we get into reductions, does anybody have any thoughts or questions regarding the revenue budget?
Yeah, Andy, could you just go a little bit into how that, how the state arrived at that pandemic adjustment figure of the $1,085,000?
Basically, they looked at the federal stimulus funding and that is allocated based upon Title I measurements based upon need. So we actually received a lot higher reduction than a lot of districts because the thought is that we'll be qualified for more of the federal funding proportionally because we tend to have a higher than average need in our student body.
Okay. So that adjustment is essentially, I mean, this is an oversimplification perhaps, but the pandemic adjustment figure is what the state thinks that we will receive as our share of the federal stimulus?
Exactly. And for lack of any other target number, we're using that number as a potential reduction because we know the governor has the ability and will, will most likely exercise that authority to reduce payments throughout the year. But we'd like to get ahead of it and, and if the reductions are higher than this level, we would just use our, our fund balance or our reserves to get us through the year. So there's no more, there's no mid-year adjustments to, to programs or services. We think we get ahead of it now. We can do these strategic reductions and then preserve programs for the year.
So the idea being no matter how bad things may get for at least 2021, this is hopefully it in terms of reductions?
Exactly, yeah. Any other questions or thoughts?
That 500K reduction from, in, in county sales tax, Andy, that's our estimate?
Yeah, that's purely a, a rough estimate. And it's a 10% fully, full year reduction. It'll probably be a lot higher the first couple of quarters and, and hopefully at some point the economy will pick back up.
Yeah. Or, you know, maybe we'll discover oil in the district somewhere.
Put our students to work. All right. If people are comfortable with the, the revenue assumptions, we'll, we'll get into what that means. So the, the next page at is part of the package are the potential budget reductions. The, the top portion are the ones that were already built into the budget. In order to balance the budget originally, we had taken some measured reductions. And so that's just to remind you of what we had taken. We're getting some turnover savings through retirements. We reduced the growth in our EMCC slots. We were reallocating some of our special ed staffing, rebalancing that. We've seen an PNL teacher aid at the high school while as the district wide TOSA. So those cuts had already been planned and, and in the process of being implemented. So what we needed to do is come up with another $1.6 million reduction. So the first set of reductions we're proposing is to eliminate the additions that we had put into the budget. There were some program enhancements that we were going to do, including the AMP algebra course, which would have required one FTE and some of the student initiatives we would have added, as well as we were adding two teachers to accommodate primary enrollment. We had added $242,000 into the budget. We're proposing eliminating those. Any questions on those? All right. The next, the next thing we looked at, where could, what are the reductions we could do without affecting people? As you know, personnel costs are three quarters of our budget, but they're the, the folks are the ones, they're, the people are what make this district what it is. So we tried to look at reductions away from people. So the first one, we had added $100,000 into next year's budget for the learning environment initiative. Look at how, how do we design classrooms for the future? We'll have to postpone that. We'll take that out. Our equipment budget, we're taking out $100,000 of there. We'll just have to either buy fewer things or put them on a longer cycle. So we'll reduce things there. Our supplies budget, we'll reduce our supplies budget by 5%. And really the 5% is after we had increased it 2% for inflation. So it's going to be a really a net 3% reduction to the schools that we'll deal. So that's about 35,000. We're going to reduce our transfer to food services by 20,000. Right now they are carrying some fund balance, so they'll have to start digging into their fund balance. I am a bit concerned because right now we are paying our food service workers and, and so we are eating in the fund balance now, but we're hoping we will get some federal or state reimbursement for that. The next items, judgment and claims, we always budget a couple hundred thousand dollars for, for tax assurie cases. We propose reducing that by 15,000 and just digging into our reserve if we have claims that exceed that. Tightening up our professional development and service, taking a 5% haircut there, $15,000. Reducing our travel and conferences, basically no out-of-state travel will be allowed unless the employee wants to fund it themselves and they believe it's that important. So, and, and even reducing some of the in-state stuff, but taking 10, at least $10,000 out of there. Our human resource recruitment budget, reducing that by 40%. Given these economic times, we're putting a hiring freeze on, we'll only be hiring for strategic or key positions that we can't backfill otherwise, so we reduce that budget. So those were the, the non-personnel cuts that we came up with to help reduce the gap. And, and then we got into personnel. So the next one is looking at some administrative attrition, basically not backfilling some vacancies with outside players. And this is one we'll need some discussion with the board. If we increase our primary intermediate class size by one, we can not backfill five of our teacher retirements that we are having this year. So, so that's one that we will need some discussion on. We're also proposing a hiring freeze on our hourly positions. We do have hundreds of hourly positions. We're proposing, we, every year we typically get a, a fair amount of attrition on that. So we're proposing a hiring freeze and not backfilling as that happens. And then we have two junior high school TOSA positions where we do have openings in the classroom that those TOSA's can go back and fill. So there's no classroom impact. These are our coaching who, who help with provide professional development. We move them back into the classroom. So with that, I, I guess the first thing to tee up, would the board be supportive of increase in our class size at the elementary levels over the board policy by one?
Andy, that means the average class size would not be 15, it would be 16 and then be capped at 18. Is that correct?
Yes, at the primary level, yes.
And then for the intermediate, I forget what the average class size is. I'm sorry.
You're muted, Pat.
Remember Garrett Morris on Saturday Night Live. At the intermediate level, the average would go to 21 or, yes, 21 and the cap would go to 23. So as you can see, there's a lot of dollars tied up in the class size. Those between the two positions that we had added at primary plus these six elementary positions at eight positions. So that's over half a million dollars of our, our reductions that we would need to achieve, but we, we need the board's permission to, to exceed the board policy on class size.
I may already know the answer to this question, but is there any other places to find that money in terms of grade levels at, at the junior high or high school level? Was that looked at? What could that look like?
It was certainly looked at, but we're, a lot of it would involve layoffs in order to get, get the, the places that are tolerable. So at this phase, we're trying to avoid layoffs.
We are, we are going to take some attrition at the, at the secondary level anyway, just by virtue of, of numbers and how they shook out. But if you start to look at possible reductions beyond that, you're going to be, you're going to have to forego some program, some, some electives or APs in order to make that happen. And we're, you know, we're pretty much at the board guidelines for class size.
Right.
The, the other thing I would say, James, is that, you know, this is going to be a long-term issue for us. You know, I talked in the beginning about staggering the cuts. We, we know that we're going to have to go into some places over the next couple of years that we don't want to go into. Making program adjustments at the secondary level. And, and we know that we're going to have to go at the elementary level. We're going to have to adjust those, those cap sizes well beyond one, one student. But, but we felt like if we were able to just nudge those numbers a little bit this year, like right now, that, that would be a way to realize significant savings for bridging the gap without impacting staffing as from a layoff perspective and without putting teachers in a position where we were significantly increasing class sizes.
Right.
Just to let you know, as we're, as we're trying to map out how these section cuts look and, and where they're going to go relative to the schools and the grade levels, I'm trying to keep kindergarten and first grade smaller relative to second and third. So you'll see more sections approaching the 17 or 18 level at second and third grade rather than kindergarten. Try to keep those foundational reading groups smaller.
Yeah.
All this, the increase in class sizes, so hopefully if the governor, if the governor decides that this, at a certain quarter, he's decreasing our fund, this will prevent mid-year layoffs or reductions?
That's the idea is to make these moves now so that we, and then whatever we, you know, whatever we get back in, in stimulus monies, whatever we capture in fund balance, we would put toward making the necessary adjustments as we experience quarterly reductions. Andy, sorry I cut you off.
No, that's exactly right. Our, our desire is not to have to do any mid-year cuts. So if anything went beyond what we're proposing here, like Bo said, we would capture it through our, our fund balance or reserves. But this, this, this we're hoping is as bad as it gets, but nobody really knows.
I would just hope that, I mean, it's obviously you can't predict the future, but that we might be able to, when, if and when times get better, relook at the, the class size, you know, the caps at the, at the primary, at the elementary level. Just thinking about, you know, how it's, I think it's, we've discussed it many times in person, but just to say again, you know, I think it's one of our district's great strengths that we have such a, such a low student to teacher ratio in the elementary levels. I, it's good for the students, it's good for the teachers, it's good for everybody. And so, yeah, I just, I understand, you know, judicious belt tightening now and I don't, it's really, it's hard to argue against it. I just hope that maybe once there's some more, if and when there's some more wiggle room someday, that we could relook at, at the issue.
Understood.
Could you just remind me what the intermediate, what we are at right now with the average?
The target average right now is 20 with a cap of 22.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Any other thoughts on this?
Let's see, it's how we have a choice.
Right.
Yeah, I mean,
I don't want to, I don't want to do mid-year cuts. I don't want to be that district.
Let me tell you, it's awful, your cuts.
Yeah.
It's awful just watching it. I can't imagine living through it, so.
Exactly. It's, it's, it's as much of a rock and a hard place as I've ever seen, but I think we've got to do what we've got to do. And, you know, Bo, thank you to you and to Andy and the whole team for, you know, putting a lot of good thought into, into this.
Like I said, we, we wanted to be really careful about what we were proposing. This isn't a situation anybody wants to be in, but like I said, we tried to look at it through every single lens and, and at every single angle. And it's a lot of money to have to bridge for a district our size in a short period of time, but we do feel like this is sort of best case scenario within a bad situation. Being able to minimize the impact to, to learning in classrooms and, you know, just to reiterate that and to be in a position where you can, where you can minimize layoffs. Recognizing that, that this is probably going to be our reality for the next few years for all districts.
Right, yeah, yeah. Well, there's, you know, I may not know much, but I know that, you know, the, the effects of a downturn like what we're looking at maybe hits, well, I don't want to say it hits school districts any harder than other areas, but it certainly lingers for a while in terms of, you know, that couple-year window, you know, you're, you're, you're talking about, Bo. We're just, I guess we just hope for, hope for the best.
2008 was, was tough and it took us a while to rebound from that.
Sure.
We did have good reserves that we were using judiciously, but now, you know, we're in a whole different place. As I prefer not to touch class size, I prefer not to have mid-year cuts.
Right.
Right.
And the other thing I did not mention during in the revenue side, but one thing we are advertising for our, our community is the tax rate will not exceed 1.5%. Initially, we're going out with under 2%, thinking it would be around 1.99. But after talking to the town assessor, there's a couple of things coming online. Part of our G and E substation is coming online, which is new tax revenue. And the marketplace small, the portion that's being sold to the U of R for one year only, it comes onto the tax rolls. So we feel pretty comfortable in, in committing to our community, the tax rate increase will be less than 1.5%. So most of our cuts are driven through state aid and, and sales tax reductions, but we understand our, our local community is also feeling the pinch and we, we think the 1.5% is, is doable and it'll help alleviate some of the impact on the community.
So many people have, have lost their jobs that looking at the 1.5% is going to be a little easier on their wallets.
I do have another question about class size, but about the TOSA's at the junior high level. Have we thought about, because I know that they're struggling in both areas a little bit, especially at Roth. I mean, has that been thought about to what supports that they're gonna need next year with, without having those TOSA's?
Y- yeah, I don't, I, I don't, um, I know that Dina has some thoughts on this, but I don't think she's gonna be able to answer it. Uh, I thought that that was a, uh, because of her, the technology's, uh, a beautiful thing, but at times it's a curse.
Yeah, I get that.
Um, a- and, and I, I remember it was brought up as we were working through the process this winter about, um, reducing, um, supports at the, at the junior high level when that tends to be where we, uh, struggle the most in terms of student outcomes. And so I know that, that Dina's looking at how we can reallocate existing resources in support of those buildings, recognizing that, um, again, we, you know, we can't, we can't take the hatchet to this, we have to be strategic about, um, the reductions that we're making. So, um, while we're taking some things away, we'll be redeploying other resources in support of those buildings.
Can I, can I jump in, Bo?
Yeah, sure.
Actually, both of those teachers who are currently the coaches at the junior high level are being reassigned full-time to Roth. Um, one is gonna fill an English position, uh, which will allow us to save, uh, hiring for a position and one is going to, um, uh, go into the math teaching program there to allow us to provide more academic support. We were gonna have to, that's one of the reasons why we postponed the AMP program. We were gonna have to use some of our, um, staffing that we had dedicated to, uh, instructional support in math, um, for classroom teaching positions. And now by moving the coach in there, those math specialists will be able to work full-time with kids providing academic support. So Roth is, even though we're tightening our belts, the net effect in that case, the two coaches, is that Roth is getting additional support in both ELA and math.
Okay.
Historically, we've always tried to, um, I just lost the word I was gonna use, that scaffolding approach, not to be drastic and, and do all these cuts all at once. And I think that's what the community appreciates about this district is we try to stagger it and not make it so dramatic that we have all these cuts to programs. They do value that.
The o- the other thing to remember too is that we have, um, an ELA director and a director of math who, um, can take a more active role in the direct coaching of teachers, you know, to support program implementation and some of the changes we're trying to make in instruction at Roth. So I think that's important to keep in mind, too.
Good point.
Thanks, Pat.
A- and tonight is really, you know, um, when, when Jennifer brought up the idea of a special meeting, we all were very supportive of it because it just gives us a chance to, um, have open, honest conversation about where we are and to get feedback from you and to help people understand, um, what's going on because everything is moving so quickly in these scenarios. Um, I'm sure that you see that just by watching the news and, uh, reading various, uh, email communications and news articles. Um, things are happening really quickly in every facet around this whole situation, especially as it relates to education. Um, so tonight is, is really about having conversations, uh, talking about the changes that have occurred since, since the last time we talked about the budget, um, getting guidance from you in terms of, you know, getting a feel for whether or not these, these are reductions and measures and approaches that you'll be able to support. And then on the 14th, next Tuesday, we would be asking you to adopt the budget.
A- and what this does, it would reduce our budget. Um, if you went to our, the last page, the, the expense budget, it, it makes it a 2.4 or 5% year-over-year increase, um, which is, is, uh, over percent lower than the 3.6% we would have been going out with. Though in these tough, um, economic times, I, that's probably a little bit more palatable to the community. Um, and, and this shows where the cuts are. Basically, the instructional salary line, um, is down quite a bit from the increase that we had and that reflects both the administrative, um, reassignments and, uh, to fill vacancy as well as, as the elementary, um, teaching positions that we won't backfill. Um, but it, all in all, it does leave us with a 2.4 or 5% year-over-year budget increase and a tax rate increase that would be under one and a half percent. So if people are, are there any more questions, either on the cuts or, or the reductions rather, or on the budget?
I have a quick question on the hiring freeze for hourly workers. Um, cause that means, say, someone leaves a position, like, I'm thinking hourly workers, I think of, um, you know, maintenance and, you know, cafeteria workers and all of that. If someone leave mid-year, we do not replace that position, is that what that means?
Uh, y- yes, but we would evaluate that position and if it's vital, we might reassign somebody there, move somebody there. So we would take the attrition, but we'd evaluate the position and, and if it's more important than a, another position or more vital, then we would reassign somebody to, to fill that vacancy. Um, but somewhere there would be a reduction of service somewhere.
Cause my big concern is just even in the cafeteria is, you know, the, mainly women who help out in the cafeteria with the elementary students, that's like, it's a constant revolving door. And that's my concern is, okay, then we're down to two, if we're down to two people at an elementary school.
Yeah, I think that's a good e- example, the place where we would backfill that position and look elsewhere.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any more questions? Then we'll take it up at our next meeting on the 14th. Thank you, Andy and Bo and everyone for all your hard work and your-
Excuse me, Jennifer?
Yes.
Andy, has updated all on the bu- budget vote date? I haven't seen anything other than at least June 1st.
That, that is all that I know, so I, I think we have not been given any new guidelines as far as dates, so I'm still proposing we go forward on the 14th and adopt the budget. It'll be these revised numbers that you see that you'll be adopting, um, un- unless you have any change of mind between now and next week. But the budget notice that I'll put in the package, it has a date in there of June 9th, but it also says draft because, that's a good point, George, and thanks for bringing it up. We know the vote is delayed until June, but we have no idea what date in June. So, if, our guess is it'll either be June 2nd or June 9th.
Uh, yeah, I've, I heard June 9th with a backup date of June 30th potentially, but the only thing that's really set in stone is that it's gonna be after June 1st right now.
And Bo, what I'm hearing from the, from the county, from the board of elections, their, their vote is right now supposedly toward the end of June. And depending on how close we get, they might be able, we might not be able to use their machines in order to do it because of they, they need so many for their own vote.
The primaries.
Right. So I think, I think they're gonna have to look at it again before June 1st, but no dates again, like no dates have been set in stone and they're gonna have to look at the county first.
Right.
I, I was focusing on the notice, thinking about the notice publication date and having a number to work with, that's where I was looking at.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think we should probably assume June 9th and back up for the 45 days from there and, and start, even if we end up having to do an extra notice.
Right.
Um, but we, and as far as I know, there's been no relief on approving the property tax report card, that is still due, so that'll be on the agenda next week. Um, so I, I think we move forward with these adjusted numbers and, and then the only question mark will be when do we actually have the vote?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No.
I'm sorry, Diane, did you say something?
I said no.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, I'd like to call, I'd like a motion to call this meeting to adjournment. Moved by Nikki, seconded by James. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. I'll see everyone on April 14th.